Okay, I'll go ahead and call to order today's planning commission meeting. It is August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Oh, is that mine?
Yeah.
Apologies. Okay. We'll go ahead and start with the visitor, or actually we'll do real call first. We'll start with you.
John Lamont, President.
Bob Gressons.
Margot Clinton.
Scott Hunter.
Suzanne Johansson.
Nathan Nelson.
Aaron Ladd.
Okay, sorry, I'm just. Um, next we'll go ahead and move into the visitor's section. This is for visitors that have comments that do not pertain to tonight's. Agenda item. I'm gonna lean on you, if that's okay for online visitors.
Uh, yeah, I still haven't gotten.
Um, I might lean on you, of course. Um, then, but um, I do, the only one I have up here is for tonight's agenda item. If you do have comments for tonight, you can go ahead and not on tonight's agenda item, you can fill out a form. Um, and then is there anyone, if you're online, raise your hand.
No online.
Okay. Great. Next, we'll go ahead and move into agenda item two, the quasi judicial public hearing. I will go ahead and open the hearing. This is for item PLW O Z twenty twenty five oh three six three Waterway Overlay Zone Application for the Fire Rock Bridge Removal and Restoration Project located in located on the Deschutes River west of Fire Rock Road and east of Broken Arrow Road. Next, we'll go on to the statement of pre-hearing context bias prejudice or personal interest, and we'll just start down the line.
None for me.
None.
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 Next, we will move on to the challenge for the bias prejudgment or personal interest. If anyone would like to challenge that, you may. Okay. Now we'll go to staff to explain the procedural requirements. Colin.
Sure. So I'm gonna read a prepared statement here, but essentially what this means is directed to those of you who wish to testify tonight and really also for the applicant to, there's a section here, but it's mostly for what you should be aware of as you're providing testimony tonight, and this is a requirement of state law. So unless I hear an objection, the city city will rely on the mailed notice and the staff report as well as staff's oral presentation that lists the applicable substantive criteria. All testimony, argument and evidence must be directed to those criteria uh, or other comprehensive plan or development code criteria that you believe are applicable. The failure to address an issue with sufficient specificity for the planning commission to understand and resolve the issue and its decision and to afford other parties an opportunity to respond may preclude an appeal on that issue to this, to the land use board of appeals. The failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue concerning a proposed condition of approval with sufficient specificity for the commission to respond to the issue and its decision and to afford other parties an opportunity to respond may preclude a future civil action for damages concerning that condition in the circuit court. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move into the Safford. Aaron.
Hi, good evening, Aaron Benson, Senior Planner. Uh, we're here to talk about the, you know, proposal to remove the Fire Rock Footbridge and to restore um that's uh area of the river and they've got a presentation for you, uh, the applicant does as well. So this map shows the subject property. Uh, it's basically, well, one tax lot on the west side of the river and one on the east side of the river. The, the one on the east side of the river is owned by the public and the one on the west side is owned by the Rimrock West Homeowners Association. Um, there is a pathway with um a stairway built into um the ground that um leads from Broken Arrow Road um that uh through this, that private open space property to this bridge. Um, I don't know if you can see my cursor, probably not, but um you, you can faintly see the footbridge in this um aerial photo. On the Fire Rock roadside, there is an easement from the end of that cul-de-sac um that follows a trail and um leads to a steep wooden staircase that um drops down to the publicly owned parcel there. This bridge was built in the seventies. It was originally um built to support a water line that ran under it um to bring water from the east side of the river over to the uh Rimrock West subdivision. Um, the bridge fell into disrepair. Uh, the water line has been um taken out of service and so our engineering uh folks uh uh had planned to take it out. Uh, we did have a planning commission meeting a while back where um uh, we reviewed this application once before. The proposal before um only uh involved restoring the um access um on the west side of the river and not the staircase on the east side of the river. And now the project includes replacing um that staircase on the east side of the river as well. Um. So the uh, there's one, two, three, four, five different um sections of the Waterway Overlay Zone that have um pertain to this application. Sub uh, section six ten has to do with tree removal and state agency coordination. Section six twenty is the repairing corridor subzone um, which in this location um is an area thirty feet from the ordinary high watermark along both sides of the river. Um, the Deschutes River Corridor Area of Special Interest Subzone, that's the one that extends the furthest out. These are um areas that are generally in a river canyon. So there's uh, there's an area of special interest at kind of the north end of the city where the river um flows through this canyon. Uh, there's one at the south end too. Um, the, and then the floodplain subzone um. This uh, you know, right along the banks of the river here, there is a floodplain and there's special rules that pertain to anything you do in there. And the last one is the design review subzone that mostly applies to when there's uh, you know, like a new house or new commercial building or something that's located within a hundred feet of the river. Um, not too applicable to this particular project. This map, um, it's kind of hard to see, but it just shows those um different subzones of the Waterway Overlay Zone. This is a photo of the um existing conditions um on the west side, so you can see um, the existing bridge there. And this is a photo of the existing conditions on the east side. There's that steep staircase I mentioned, and then kind of in the background, you can uh, see down along uh, on the river, the footbridge that crosses the river. Um, again, I apologize, this is kind of hard to see, but this a- also um shows the work area and kind of that yellowy orangey color. Um, and then the different subzones. Um, the, again, the proposal is to um replace the wooden staircase with something substantially similar on the east side, take out the bridge and um restore the trail and if necessary, the wooden stir uh that's on the west side of the river as well. Um. From what I understand, there is possible that that might not have to be taken out. Um, but if it is to get to allow um small um uh, heavy equipment in there, then, then it would be replaced in kind. There, the, the original proposal, I think, had uh several trees that were uh, that they thought would have to be taken out. Um, they sharpened their pencil and, and um this current proposal, only one eighteen inch ponderosa tree that's right um uh, at the west end of the bridge um will have to be taken out and that'll be replaced. They'll plant a replacement tree for that. So this is an instance where uh, a removal of a tree within the Waterway Overlay Zone is necessary to accommodate this restoration work. There are, besides of uh, this approval from the planning commission that's necessary, the um city has to um get a permit from the Division of State Lands, which regulates wetlands, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, um, the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, which oversees the state scenic waterway program. Um, this uh, this project is located in that state scenic waterway. The DEQ, so there's a lot of alphabet soup here of uh, state and federal agencies. I, I didn't mention the Army Corps of Engineers, but um most of these permits have already been obtained or they're, or they're in the works. Um, the repairing corridor subzone uh has um a list of things that can be approved within there and uh, I think the one that's probably the most applicable here is the one on the bottom, number six, restoration of the repairing corridor, including site grading and recontoring when carried out in conformance with an approved restoration plan. For this project, the city hired um a company called Jacobs that has prepared a restoration plan. And there's not really any site grading or recontoring proposed, but you know, that heavy equipment is gonna disturb some stuff um when they're taking the bridge out and um, that'll all be restored with um native plants and um staff believes that it's a good restoration plan that they've put together. In the repairing quarter subzone, some of this stuff kind of overlaps in terms of um the approval criteria in the repairing corridor, you gotta get all your state and federal permits. Um, you have to design whatever you're doing to minimize intrusion into the repairing corridor and um minimize the amount of vegetation you're taking out. Take care of erosion, uh, take care of any surface runoff and design things to minimize any adverse impacts to wetlands, et cetera. Um, and that's been done here. The area of special interest subzone, um, that's um uh, requires that a, has, the project has to be designed and constructed to maintain the integrity of the existing natural features and biological system. Um, there are some setbacks that um are listed in here, just like the, the design review subzone. Um. Because the uh, city is, is just removing and replacing things like for like, there's some allowances for those types of things, as well as um allowances for um features that facilitate public access and use and enjoyment of the river. Um. In the, the next subzone is the floodplain subzone. Uh, there's not a whole lot in here that's very applicable. The, when they pull out the um footbridge, they'll also pull out the concrete um supports for it and um the um Jacobs has done an analysis of, of what needs to be done there to avoid um impacts to fish and wildlife and um, and as well, uh, you know, not to alter the floodplain in a way that would have any um negative impacts. The design review subzone, the really, the only uh criterion in there that's uh pertinent is the section on rebuilding of existing structures um, which um that, that's allowed as long as there's comparable in size, profile, use and location to what was already there, and that's what's being proposed. So um I think the applicant will have more photos to kind of help you familiarize yourselves with this. If you haven't gone down there yourself, this footbridge has been basically off limits, closed um for maybe close to ten years now. Um, it's a really neat footbridge. I mean, I remember taking my kids when they were little and we called it the Indiana Jones Bridge. It's kind of like you know, it's, it's, it's got, you know, boars that were missing, even back, you know, then it was kind of in rough shape, but um yeah, uh, this'll, in taking it out, uh, it'll restore this part of the river and there will still be public access from Fire Rock Road and private access to that section of the riverbank um to the homeowners of the Rim, Rimrock West subdivision as there has been. Uh, but we're recommending two conditions of approval. Um, one, that uh approval is based on the plans and supporting documents that have been submitted. Um, and two, that before commencing construction, they have to obtain all their uh required local, state and federal permits and approvals and give us copies of those, just so we have them in our files. Do you have any questions?
Question. Just are, is planning uh tracking all those different permits or is public works or engineering, who, who tracks all that?
Not, um, I mean, the, the engineers that are in charge of this project are tracking them. Like I say, um, some of those, uh, the, the ones that have already been issued have been uploaded. We reached out to those agencies again this time and um, uh, for instance, the um the Department of Stan, State Lands said, you know, they, they approved it back before and there's not any additional fill or disturbance that's proposed, so it's, that, that's still good to go. Um.
Okay.
Et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Um. So this was not built by the city, right? This is built by.
Um, you know, they probably have more information.
Okay.
On that, I, I don't know the provenance exactly of uh, if it was built by the city or at, you know, uh, as in order to provide water to this subdivision that was approved prior to annexation. Originally, this the Rimrock West subdivision was all on uh onsite septic systems too and um many years later, the city provided um all the city bend sewer. Um. So it's kind of an evolution.
I was just kind of wondering about just like the beginning, you know, the history of it.
Yeah.
When the city. Cause I, I think the city didn't build it and then took ownership of it, ownership of it and just wondering about what the you know, what the agreement was.
Yeah.
There.
Yeah, yeah, that, it's, it's kind of water under the bridge, but the, the uh the uh, the applicant, I think, can give you more history on that if you want.
Okay, awesome.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Um. Last time we heard about this, the, like you mentioned, access from the east side was planning on being removed. Can you speak a little bit more on like what's happened since that last meeting?
Um, again, I'm gonna defer to the applicant. I know that, you know, that was a pretty controversial and I believe the city manager kind of provided direction to um, the engineers that were working on that to, to revisit that issue, meet with the neighbors, come up with uh, an access solution. Um. In their presentation, which I've gotten a sneak peek of, they actually have uh like a visual uh rendering of what that replacement staircase is gonna look like. Um, instead of like just one straight shot down, it's gonna have a landing in the middle. Uh, it looks really nice, I think. Um, so they'll show you that.
Thank you.
No, good.
Okay. Well, anybody else? Okay. We'll go ahead to the applicants. Please, David. Thank you, Aaron.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carter Lawrence, City of Bend Engineering. I'm the project manager. Um, with me also from engineering, I have Jason Sir, and then we also have our consultants with Jacobs Engineering Group, Brittany Hughes and Kim Wetzel. Um, yeah, as Aaron mentioned, based on our best understanding, the Fire Rock Bridge infrastructure was constructed in support of a water service line to service the Rimrock West um neighborhood before it was part of the city of Bend. Um, this infrastructure was inherited by uh water services with the city when the neighborhood was incorporated. Uh, in twenty fifteen, the bridge was closed due um to public use due to safety concerns. Sort of as part of the, an upgrade to the water system in Rimrock West and that sort of west side neighborhood. Uh, the water line that the bridge supports uh has been rendered obsolete and has been taken offline um during this improvement project. Um. On the west side, the city of Bend hired Jacobs Engineering to perform a condition assessment of the bridge and staircase. Um, and I'll pass it over to Brittany Hughes to talk about their findings and recommendations of that.
Sure. So um Jacobs, we performed a condition assessment on the bridge. There are several um items, the structure is forty to fifty years old, um, which is an advanced age for a timber structure like that, that doesn't have um pressure-treated wood construction. There's a lot of things with it that were fairly structurally deficient. Um, probably one of the biggest ones just is that the concrete footings um, don't have proper bearing um support. Um, so we had made a recommendation in that report and the city took that um to uh keep the bridge closed at, at that particular time. Um, they also asked us to do a condition assessment of that east side staircase um, which you'll see in the, in the photo here from kind of from below. Again, similar issues with that. Um, just numerous stair treads, risers. Um, are bowed or split or checked. Um, and then there's several posts that just aren't bearing on anything and the ones that are, don't have any structural attachment to um, the thing that they're set on. So, um. We um originally did, um, as Aaron mentioned, submit a WAS per, for a WAS permit in early twenty twenty four. Um, and so leading up to that planning commission meeting, it became pretty apparent um that there was some additional community engagement that was needed as a part of uh that effort. So the city had chosen at that time to rescind the WAS application um and conduct some additional outreach on the project. Um, that's since been conducted and that's why we're here today and that project includes a replacement of the staircase on the east side of the river. Um, again, sorry, this map is so small after seeing it on Aaron's screen. Um, this just shows the WAS boundary, so that the orange area on the screen is showing um our proposed disturbance area um in order to remove the bridge and get the staircase replaced. Um, as Aaron mentioned, right, the reason we're here is our project falls within that WAS boundary. Um, and we're here to uh look for approval for our, our permit today. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the major scope elements of the project. So um, it includes obviously removal of the bridge. That includes the entire wood structure itself and the eight concrete piers that uh it is resting on. It includes removal and replacement of the east side staircase. And then it also includes potential removal and replacement of the west side staircase. The, the difference there is we as engineers don't specify the means and methods by which a contractor does their work. We set the parameters with, within which they must work, so they have to meet all their permit condi, all the permit conditions. Um, but the way that they choose to do the work um can vary. So um, because access down into this um uh canyon is so difficult, um, we have pinpointed the west side of the um river as the likely access point if they were to use any type of equipment to try to remove the bridge. Um, and so in that case, we envision they might choose to remove that west side staircase and replacement in order to get a, and replace it in order to get equipment down to the river. If they choose to use, to do much of the removal by hand um, or using some type of highline or other equipment, they may be packing a lot of stuff into the canyon by hand in order to, to take that bridge out. So um, that's left up, up to the contractor to make, make that decision. Um, the design does minimize construction disturbance. Um. And then we um are, all the conditions for the permits are wrapped into the contract documents that are put out to bid to the contractors. Um, and we are looking at doing that removal work during the twenty twenty six in-water work window um pending a, approval of all the, the permits. Uh, this is a rendering of what that east side staircase replacement um would look like. Uh, there are a couple of things that are a little bit different than what is out there now, one of which is in order to meet the Oregon Structural Specialty Code due to the, the um height of the stairs, there has to be an intermediate landing. There's not one that's out there currently. Um, so you'll see that in the little profile view there. Um, and then the goal is to replace the, the staircase basically in kind, um matching natural wood tones and whatnot um to blend into the, the cliff face out there. This is just a picture of what that west side staircase looks like. And again, as discussed, um, this is a, a included as a potential for the contractor to decide how if they, if they do disturb um that staircase at all or, or damage it, that it would need to be replaced. Uh, one of the other things we wanted to highlight um in the application is just the plan for erosion and sediment control. So um, the, again, the yellow area here on the screen shows kind of the disturbance area. Um, there are several trees out on the west side of the river, so we're, um, we've got tree protection fencing identified um for any of the trees that are designated to remain in the work air, active work area. As Aaron mentioned, there is a tree, an eighteen inch ponderosa pine tree that's just on the um, south side of the approach of the bridge um on the west side of the river. There's also another one just on the north side of the approach. And so we took a look, there's, it's a, it's a, a dual trunk um tree. Um, so we have identified that one as um potentially needing to be removed just to facilitate construction access down there. Um, we will be using or straw fence or straw, uh, sorry, silt fence or straw waddles to protect um any uh sediment runoff from getting into the, the river. And then um, if the contractor chooses, we have um as a part of our permit applications to um the Army Corps of Engineers and DSL um, and to uh the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, we have identified the potential for the contractor to walk some equipment. Called putting their feet, the equipment feet in the edge of the stream. Um, and if they do that, they would need to, to implement these removable erosion control mats for any equipment that they use near, near the ri, the edge of the river. Um, and then I wanted to highlight site restoration. So um we've identified a couple of different um, you know, main areas of restoration. So there's the repairian area, obviously right along the river corridor. Um, the, the native plants that we've identified are in the same context with what is already out at the site. Uh, we tried to make sure that we were put it, putting back plants and shrubs that, that are, that are already out on site. Um, there will be some um uh plugs put in near the, the edge of the river, bull rush plugs. Um, there's ground cover and seeding that will also be done in a lot of the area. Um, and then there is um groups of planting, so red twig dogwood, um bitter cherry, I think is one of the other ones that'll be down closer to the river. And then more of the upland area um will have some of these other um shrubs that you see on here like golden current and, and the analog bitter bitter brush. Um, these are the other permits that we've applied for or are, or will be obtaining. So we have applied for our section four oh four permit. As Aaron mentioned, the DSL component of that permit has already been issued. The Army Corps of Engineers is um reviewing the application. Um, they won't issue uh the application until the four oh one permit is approved by DEQ. DEQ won't issue their approval until we have our land use approval, so you can kind of see how it builds on itself. Um, we have also applied to the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for, uh, it's a notification of intent permit. Um, I actually met the uh reviewer out on site, so she could have a look at what the area looks like. They're really reviewing because we're in a section of the state scenic waterway um, to make sure that we're not creating something that would be obtrusive um to, to folks enjoying the river. Um, we have coordinated with Oregon DEQ. They told us our, the uh twelve hundred C permit is not applicable. We still need to implement erosion control measures, of course. Um, as a part of the work, um, we have already obtained our ODFNW Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Fish Passage Plan um approval. Um, and then the, the last piece on here, the, the scientific take permits for any of the work that we need to do in the river, um. which would be the removal of, there's four concrete piers out kind of in the center of, of the river and an island. We'll have to do some work area isolation there. And we've talked about either using a, the contractor using a concrete saw or some type of expansive grout. The agreement with ODFNW is that the the piers need to be removed and be flush with the faces of the bedrock boulders that are out in the middle of the river. And so those scientific take permits allow, you know, if we run into fish or something like that, they allow a little bit of take with regards to that. But those we understand can't be obtained until the year in which we plan to do the work. So we would apply for those in January of 2026. And then there's other local permits. I believe we're actually planning on obtaining the clearing and grading permit, but the demolition permit and the building permits required for the staircases are going to be required that the contractor obtain those. And I'm going to turn it back over to Carter to talk about the public outreach and kind of close out the presentation.
Yeah. So I sort of, as you, as you asked, over the course of this project, because it's been going on for a while, we have had extensive sort of communication with both east and west side residents. We've had, we presented to the west side HOA and then we've, we've met with, with the residents on the east side in a couple of points in time over the past year. Sort of the big thing to come of that were from the west side residents sort of just coordinating the access to be as unobtrusive to them as possible. And then sort of also to help sort of dictate what the restoration in their parcel looks like. And then on the east side, we received pretty strong desire from a majority of the residents to retain access to that public parcel on the east side. And that's, that communication is sort of what led us to be able to include the replacement of the staircase instead of just a removal of the, of the stairs to help maintain that, that access. Project timeline, in order to make sure we are able to get our, our large list of permits in order. We've chosen the 2026 to, to do this work since we'll be required to do the work in the in-water work window, which is July fifteenth, October fifteenth. So doing it this year just seemed, seemed a little, a little bit too rushed. So that's sort of what led us to, to shoot for next year to do this. When that is all wrapped up, we will do our restoration in the fall, which is the recommended time to do, do that sort of planting. And then that will close out the project with our three-year restoration warranty to replace anything that, that ends up dying. With that, send it back to you guys for any questions you might have.
Knowing the west side is private, it's with the homeowner association. The east side is public. Will it stay as a city site or is it going to go to the park district?
It will stay as with the city.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Just checking. Yeah. Thanks. Currently accepting offers of ten cents for them. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, question.
Thank you. I have none. Scott?
Yeah, I was just wondering about the, the history of it and, and you know, it, it's not a bridge that went in disrepair because it wasn't constructed correctly in the first place, it seems like. But I guess I've just wondered, like, there's a connectivity there. Pedestrian, you know, there's not too much on either side of it that it would, it would see a lot of usage, but I was just kind of wondering about when the city acquired it, is there a did it have a mandate or is there a as far as connectivity? Responsibility to maintain it kind of thing?
That was before my, my time, admittedly. Connectivity I know would be, would be tricky because the west side is private. So there's just, it's not feasible for there to be any sort of like public pathway.
From a plan to a private.
Correct. I would, I would have to defer to either Jason or Michael regarding any sort of I guess mandate that would have happened. Not something that I'm aware of, but. Don't know if either of you would care to speak on it?
Free to come up. If you want.
Sure.
Yeah.
Does this microphone work?
Hi, Commissioner Minis, my consultant. I'm one of the attorneys for the city. I've been working with project team and with the neighbors on this for the past year, since you first saw the application. There was a document that came up from when this area was annexed into the city in the nineties. And the legal status and the requirements of that document are unclear. So it's unclear whose responsibility, what was, when, where, why, how. The city has taken responsibility for the bridge and that's why we're moving it because it's unsafe. And we've worked through this issue as best as we could with at least preponderance of the neighbors to get to a solution that we hope will work for the city and for the folks that live on both sides of the river.
And I assume people still use it, even though it's changed often.
Okay, so we, so just to, to put it in the record, oh. I don't know exactly when the chains were first added to the bridge. I know there was an article back in 2016 in the bulletin. There was an image of the bridge. And I think I saw some chains on that image, but I was not personally down there. I have been down there since. And there are signs and chains warning folks not to use the stairs on the west, on the east side, excuse me, and not to cross the bridge. And that's on both sides because the bridge is a safety hazard. I don't, I've, I've heard rumors that people are using the bridge, but I don't actually know whether or not people are sliding under, going between or going over those chains.
Thank you. One more question, Scott?
No.
Is the property at the base of the stairs on the east side large enough that people can spend some time down there? Is that why we need the stairs? It's not, it looks like it's a canyon. So I'm trying to figure out what, why we need stairs.
I was just gonna say, I'll just say. Yes, the answer to your question. So it was at the time that this land was platted, it was in the county and this park area was dedicated to the county. It was, predates the park department. And when it was annexed, it remained public land. It's odd. Normally something's owned by a particular agency for the benefit of the public. This is not that. This is owned by the public. So there is enough space down there for folks to travel down via the stairs to spend some time by the river. And we generally heard, I wouldn't say there was a consensus one way or another, but again, with the preponderance, I think we heard that that access to the river was something that was valued. And how many people can be there at one time? I don't know. But there is some, there is some area to enjoy the river there.
Could you fit the plant commission in there?
It is a fairly, there, it is a fair, you know, there's the cliff face, right, that you need the stairs to get down. And then it's a fairly steep drop. You know, we had looked at that, can, could we crane equipment down in there to make removal of the bridge easier, but it just, there's not enough flat working space. That's not to say that there isn't enough. There's still a bit of a bank there, right, that you can stand and enjoy the, the river from that location. I think we heard from a lot of the community out there that, you know, they enjoy, as even Aaron mentioned, right, fishing with their kids or whatnot in the summertime out there. So.
And one thing I do want to put on the record, through our conversations with the neighborhood, the, there is an easement that bisects the property line or goes over both sides of the property line down to this public park area. And then the public park area, the, the property lines between the park area and the two lots on either side are not delineated very well. And one of the things the city is going to do in connection with this project, this is separate from the WAS and WAS criteria. I just want to put it on the record so you all are aware, is to put some signs up to make it clear, here's the public park area and then here's private property or property where folks should not be going because it's not, it's not public. It's not a park.
Does that help? Behind you, that, that map. It gets you conceived up there.
The orange air, the orange outline here
Publicly.
is the publicly owned parcel. And then I believe this, there's a, an easement that goes along the river's edge. And then there's an easement. This is the easement Michael was referencing that bisects these two properties and connects up to the
And then the stairs is right there.
There's a But get that easement down. It's a, I mean, it's, it's a cliff. Without the stairs, it's essentially inaccessible.
Yeah.
So who's going to maintain this bridge?
So the bridge is being moved.
Stairs.
All right.
I mean stairs, stairs, sorry, stairs.
The stairs will be maintained by the city.
Okay.
On, on the east side, just to be
On the, on the east side.
Yes, the steep stairs down the
The west side, that's private property.
All right.
For the river.
Okay. Not the parks department. Not Parks and Rec.
They thought he ends off or no?
Okay.
Any more questions?
No, I guess not.
Nathan?
I guess I, I would like to ask if there's a, if you can provide like a how we've explored since the last meeting, like ways that we can retain the bridge.
It are, based on my understanding, is, it is not feasibly possible to retain the bridge due to the fact that it is privately owned on the west side.
So it's not a financial thing. It's like a legal barrier.
Correct.
And it's unsafe.
It's both.
Well.
I think it's
Rebuilding it.
Oh, it's, oh, this has been a legal issue that's been recognized since the nineties. Also, we did have, and I'm, I'm not sure, maybe it was Jacobs that did the report, but they did a structural analysis that included a feasibility on what are all of our options and is it cost effective to rebuild this? And the conclusion in the report, correct me if I'm wrong, was essentially, no, it's not.
The challenge is when you touch it, you have to upgrade it to current standards and it would mean completely reconstructing the entire bridge in that location.
Including the footings that are in the river, right?
Yeah, and well, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think the, the bigger piece is as Carter mentioned, right, then the city is essentially facilitating access for trespassing on private property on the west side of the rivers.
Unless you just ended it in the middle of the river.
The bridge to nowhere.
Safest the fishing pier.
We, we talked, we talked about that as one of the options. It was, it was ultimately not favored for several reasons. But we, in, in our work with the neighbors, we did a lot of public outreach to talk about what is the universe of options here? What are the pros and what are the cons?
Okay, thank you so much.
Andy?
Yeah. I was wondering on the the, this yellow area here, if it hasn't really been accessible for a while, is adding public access, is that area going to be able to support without damaging the vegetation? People going down there and fishing, when we're adding a new staircase, is, is that going to have a big impact on the river?
We
and the vegetation there?
We have no reason to believe that maintaining the status quo is going to be more degrading. This has been, this has been accessible for the public for decades. So it's just maintaining the status quo.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, next. You forget.
Thank you.
You got your steps in. Okay, next we'll go ahead and move into testimony. And I don't know if someone's online. Do we have any attendees online? Okay. If you are online and you would like to speak, please raise your hand. But we will go ahead and do the in-person attendees. You'll have three minutes to speak. And just to reiterate, we, we can't answer questions. We're here just to hear your testimony. So we will go ahead and start with Joseph. Yeah, you can come up here.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Hesbrooke, H E S B R O O K. First thing I want to, want to say is we live directly above the bridge at this point. We're the house above the bridge. And it is dangerous. And I think the city is very lucky that nothing has happened because there has been constant traffic on that, on the chains and stuff. That doesn't matter. People still come across on a regular basis. But I'm not here for that. What I'm interested in mostly is the removal of the bridge and the repair of the bridge. This area that we live in, which is private property, is nearly a pristine area to go walking in. It's a wonderful area to go walking in. And if you've not visited it, and you should visit because you're making a decision on this, you should see what it's like and how nice it is. But when we see that there is going to be a lot of traffic coming through, taking things apart, moving boulders, doing all of these things to the area that we have. And it would be like somebody coming to your backyard utility or the city and tearing it all up and just leaving it. You wouldn't expect that. You would expect that it would be done the way it was in the beginning. You want your backyard to be the way it was before the construction came along. And that's what we expect. This is our backyard. It represents a financial property for us. This is an area that is valuable to us in a financial way. So we want it put back exactly or near exactly the way it was. Unfortunately, we've had a bad experience with the city in indicating on Silver Buckle Road that they were going to be putting some shrubbery and keeping the generators from showing. Well, that wasn't done. And we took, we took the city at its word that it was going to be done. And unfortunately, it wasn't. So we're a little bit wary about how this restoration is going to be done. And got thirty-seven seconds. Okay. But that's my, our biggest concern is we want to make sure that it is the way that it was in the beginning. But you need to visit to see what it's like and then come back and see what was done. We certainly invite you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Is the attendee online raising their hand?
At this time.
Okay, next we'll move on to Jerry.
My name is Jerry Wine. Excuse me, I live in in Rimrock West and very much affected by this project. I want to just provide some support for what Joseph said. And I'm going to first give you pictures of, if you could pass them around. This is the work that the city did on Silver Buckle, which it said would be surrounded by vegetation and we wouldn't see it. This is what it looked like this afternoon. This work was done maybe four or five years ago. We've tried to get the city to come back and do anything. They have not. So this is why many of our residents are concerned. And, and I would add one other factor. When this proposal was raised earlier, we got, we received some diagrams of what I understood was the way the work would be done. It involved removing the staircase at Silver Buckle. Excuse me, at, on the Rimrock West side. So the street is broken here. And taking heavy equipment down there is currently a path. And I'd like to show you some pictures of what the area currently looks like. Because I think it's really relevant. It's, it's a really pristine, beautiful area untouched. It's been preserved and protected by the community. In the proposal that we reviewed a year ago, I may be mistaken in my interpretation of it, and if I am, I apologize. It looked like they were going to take out the pathway, replace it with a six-foot straight dirt road to get that equipment down to the bridge. And I had the impression that that's the way it was going to be left. And, and I and a lot of our neighbors were really concerned. It would essentially destroy that area. And, and my recommendation to the funding commission is that you add a third requirement for approval. That requirement be that, that the area be totally and fully restored to the way it is now. And that this be done to the satisfaction of the HOA and I hope to the planning commission. Thank you. Oh, we'll, we'll, we'll say one quick thing. That, that bridge, we have very mixed feelings about it in the community. It is the only way out of the community if anything should happen on Obi-Riley. We can get out. That is the only other egress in case of a fire emergency.
Thank you. I'm missing me, no hand raised?
No hand raised.
Okay. All right, we will go ahead and move to the applicant rebuttal. Do you guys have any comments you'd like to make?
Good evening, Jason Sir, Engineering Department here. The project that was referenced previously with landscape
Good evening, Jason Sir, uh, Engineering Department here, uh, the project that was referenced previously with landscape restoration. Um, we did install a pump station, we replaced pump stations that were along Silver Buckle. The ones that were there before were basically, uh, a glorified garbage can in the ground, that had pumps, that had a lot of maintenance issues. Definitely not standard, we improved it to a city standard pump station to make sure that have the reliability, the maintenance and the functionality that a pump station needs. Um, screening is not something we typically do for pump stations, but given the nature of where this road was and the habitat that was around it, we worked extensively with the HOA to place boulders, to place vegetation out there, to make sure that it was placed in a manner that would provide that screening. We also worked with HOA, um, one of the agreements that we came to was that they would maintain the vegetation that we planted out there. There are spigots out there that they get from Tumlow Irrigation District, they get water right there. Um, so we worked with them to try and kind of a partnership, if you will, where we placed boulders, we placed vegetation, and then the maintenance was something that the HOA was supposed to, to water them. They have a lot of vegetation in the area that they were, that's currently sprinkled now. Uh, some of the vegetation that we planted was also within that sprinkled area. Um, so that was, honestly, speaking on that behalf, that was the agreement that we came to. Um, not something else than standard, but we tried to work with the HOA as much as possible. That's, um, talking about that, fire access is the other topic here. Um, we have talked to Ben EMS, um, Emergency Medical Services out here. Um, when we do construction, we definitely provide that access, we did special requirements on, um, these streets, these streets are very narrow when we did, um, water lines, water line improvements, because we're ripping up the middle of the road. So if a emergency call out happened, we make sure that fire, um, services can get to the, the property that they're responding to. As far as the long-term outlook of what the bridge offers, just reminding that the bridge does not offer the egress, it was there to provide, um, support for the water line. And because of the multitude of other reasons that was highlighted, the reasons why the bridge cannot stay, um, would, I'd like to just remind us there, but we do, as far as construction tasks go, we work extensively with Ben Fire to make sure that they can still respond. That is always a requirement of all our projects.
So the, the vegetation you put in, it didn't look like it was screening anything, though. I mean, did you do a perimeter around there and that was it, or, I mean, what was the agreement?
Yeah, so, um, one of the, the challenges with screening is, is you block access, right? If you, if it grew a hedge, then you can't no longer, you can no longer get to that pump station. We have emergency callouts to those pump stations, we have to maintain the pump stations, if something goes, um, power failure, pump failure, we have to get immediate access to those.
I would like to reiterate that this is, this pump station is not a part of tonight's approval, so I would like to, um, if your questions revolve around the pump station, I would ask that you would reserve those because it's not what we're here to discuss. But if we would like to discuss restoration of what they are going to be doing, I think that would be more on topic of it, but I think we need to be careful.
May, maybe a question to Ian, so I think the question is before us is the, the bridge removal and the replacement of the stairs by the city. And in this community, there was a project done five years ago, where there are also promises to do X, Y, and Z hedges, so the neighbors have concerns.
Well, that's what, that's what a couple of folks have said, and the applicant again has spoken to that other project. I think the planning commission, as the chair has indicated, one needs to be careful to focus on the application here and also not presume too many facts about this previous application, even if you do think it is indicative, I think it's maybe more important to ask the applicant in rebuttal. Uh, the applicant went over some of the site restoration, um, aspects of this proposal, um, it might be worthwhile to have them touch on those again if you have questions, but that is a part of the proposal to restore the site um, to the greatest extent possible, the condition it was in, is in now, so I don't want that to be overlooked, but that's,
Well, that's where I was going, are they gonna come back and do the natural version or the street going in for, uh, equipment? So you said you're gonna bring it back to the natural version, and that's what we'll do, so even if you did a straight line for a backhoe or something, you'd take that out and restore it to the pictures we saw that were passed.
Some of the other items that came up in a part of the conversation with the, the Rimrock West HOA when we met with them out on site back in December of twenty twenty-three was with regards to, um, the bark chip path that's out there that's lined with rocks and being very cautious in movement of the boulders that are out there along the path. Um, and so in the, in the drawing documents, um, we have some requirements in there about the contractor needs to be, uh, careful with how they move those boulders so that they're not marring them up with any of the heavy equipment. Um, restoring that bark, barkwood chip path. Um, though I, I do want to point out that the, the pathway out there, I believe, is about two feet wide and one of the agreements with the HOA, um, that came up as a part of our work with them and, in December twenty twenty-three was to, a request to widen that path out to about four feet wide, so that's what's currently reflected in our construction documents, was the request from the Rimrock West HOA, um, folks that were out on the site visit with us back in December of twenty twenty-three.
To restore and enhance.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
I just didn't want to talk about the pump stations specifically. Does any more questions for staff and the applicant?
No, I think that last part was very clear for me, thank you.
Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, thank you for presenting. Did, sorry, did, and I can reopen it, I just, are you sure?
I'm sure.
Okay. Okay, so next we will move into staff comments, are there, Aaron, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, I don't think so, I mean, I remember, uh, meeting with Bruce Rawning, who was with the Park District for many years. You know, uh, we've been talking about this footbridge for decades now, and we approached the Park District many, many years ago, hey, do you have any interest in, um,
Can I sell you a bridge?
Over this bridge, and then you were like, no, no. So, yeah, there, there were, that was explored as well, and it was a dead end.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll move into deliberation. Anybody have comments?
Yeah. I, I think it's much needed, overdue, and the sooner we get going on it, the better, uh. I sympathize with all the permits you have to get and, and what we have to do, so I think it's, let's get it going.
I think it meets all the criteria, very supportive. I would like to consider some of the, uh, concerns Mr. Wine raised about restoring it to the, um, state that uh, prior to the construction beginning, leading down from the, the west side. But otherwise, I thought it was very well laid out.
Yeah, and I think kind of what they alluded to in presentation, they're restoring and enhancing, which I think will be beneficial in the end, but I, of course, understand the concern that equipment's moving in, it changes and affects the landscape, and they are seeking that it comes back to where it was before, um, and I would like to think that the three-year kind of, um, maintenance warranty bond period, I don't know exactly how you guys are doing it, would, I'm not sure if that covers the pathway, um, or the whole restoration area, but I would like to think that that would be inclusive of the entirety of the pathway the equipment has to take. The area of work, there we go.
Yeah, um, I think this is interesting because we heard about it, you know, it came to us before, and, and then there was public comment and the city changed it up based on that, so I think that was pretty interesting. I feel bad that the bridge is going away, even though it's not used, um, but even if you were to replace it, you, the first step would be taking it out anyways, and, and replacing it again, public to private land, it's tricky, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I have no problem with what's proposed.
Yeah, I was, agree that access is good and, uh, it seems like it's the only place to get across the river for a long stretch, but given that it's private land on one side, unless there's an easement, uh, there really isn't any way to justify building half a bridge, uh, uh, I don't think, uh, so I think it probably does need to come out, um, and uh, you explained why we are still putting the stairs in there, there's enough access, uh, uh, enough area to access on the east side that people still can get down there to enjoy that section of the river, and I think you should have another conversation with Parks and Rec, maybe there's different people, maybe, maybe the answer would be different.
Yeah, once all the improvements are done.
There's still the maintenance, I mean, I don't know, so, uh, yes. But I appreciate the, it sounds like, uh, uh, the time between the first time it was brought up and now was well-used to get a better project, uh, and a more responsive to the community, so thank you for that.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I mostly agree with you, Scott, I'm basically across the board, I, um, am sad to see loss of a pedestrian access point across the river, I think that we don't have enough of those. Um, but I do understand the legal complexity of having a public to private access is not, it's not great, um. I, in terms of the conformance with the, the laws, um, I think the thing that would be most concerning for me here is the, the tree removal, right, is like in the riparian zone, that's like the, the biggest ecological impact, I think, in this case, um, having it only be one tree there, and then having, um, all the other, like, mitigation of the construction, I think that that, as, as far as getting construction down there, kind of shocking, that only one tree above the size that we, we regulate here, needs to be removed, I think that's the testament to the design that has been gone into this, um. Really happy to see east side access still there, that's, that's, that makes me happy. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Nathan.
I think that, well, from a safety perspective, it sounds like we really need to take the bridge out. And I'm really happy to see that they're gonna rebuild the stairs, um, on the east side, so the public can have that access, and I actually really like the fact that they're gonna leave it natural instead of making it a park, it's really nice to have some public access natural areas. Um, there, there's no getting around the fact that bringing in equipment is going to disturb that west side area in particular. Um, it does seem like you guys have been really listening to the HOA and the, and the, the the neighbors and, um, trying to incorporate their concerns into the design, so, um, yeah, I mean, I think overall, it sounds like doing a thoughtful project, and I like it.
Good work, good follow-up.
I am glad to see it came back and there was a lot of thought that went into it, and you took public comment and did something with that, so.
When I was seeing Parks and Rec, I was not picturing, picturing a green grass. How do we get a mower down the stairs? It's just, it's just, by the Parks and Rec instead of the city.
If we made it a Parks and Rec park, we'd probably have to have ABA access.
That's probably why they don't want it.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will. I will move to approve the proposed waterway overlay zone application for removal of the Fire Rock Bridge and related restoration work with the findings and conditions recommended by staff.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? None, okay, vote move. Thank you, guys.
Good work very much.
Okay, next we'll move into Agenda Item Three, just the approval of minutes from June ninth. Does anybody have any comments, or everyone okay with them? Okay. Alright, next is Communications, reports from planning commissioners, does anybody have a report, John, we can start with you.
None to report?
None.
None?
Just, uh, sorry that I missed the last riveting meeting where we went over the, uh, the bylaws for the planning commission, so I, I did watch the, I did watch the recordings, so.
Nothing to report. Okay, Pauline, you're up.
Oh goodness, so Renee is not here, and I do not, I did not pull up the upcoming meetings, so I can't go over that, so I apologize, and I have nothing to report.
Is the next meeting the one that Pauline's doing with the big?
Go on to Ian, and I will.
I feel like that's, that's just from my recollection, I feel like we'll do that in September sometime, Ian, anything?
I'm stalling. Um, I will say this, um, now that the record is closed, that we had a very genuine part of our comment about the work session and how riveting it was. Um, no, but seriously speaking, I think the, this is the liberation tonight, that was a good example of it, there's not only one way to do it, but fairly straightforward was application, I mean, some interesting questions, but, um, yeah, that was a really well-done hearing and deliberation, so, uh, good. That was great.
This all passed, been so bad.
What's that? Not the outcome, but that was, everybody, everybody had opportunity to ask questions and, um, but he was focused, that was a good, good deliberation.
So did Ian stall long enough, Colin?
So we have the, uh, September eighth meeting, the work session for Pauline's code package.
And what else is on the agenda?
That's the only thing on the September eighth agenda at this time, and then the legislative public hearing for the code package will be, um, the September twenty-second meeting.
I think she said it would be a long one, maybe, a lot of code updates.
It's a lot, I mean.
Is there a preliminary version of that code package available?
Yeah, I'm sure we'll have.
I think it might be up on the, oh, maybe it was, no, it's not yet, the agenda's not, but I wonder.
I can communicate with Pauline, I'll leave her by Senator tonight or tomorrow morning, and see if she can get that, uh, delivered, but I, I know that she typically before she moves into the work session, she has a group of, uh, folks, mostly in the development community that use the code on a routine basis that she coordinates with and puts, puts these in front of them for comments before they become like the draft and move forward through a more public process, she gets their input and so, they get that, it's been out there. So I'll see if it's ready to be sent to the planning commission, because.
And you mentioned last meeting. Yep. Some comp plan stuff is coming, is that tweaks, or is that a full revisit the comp plan five, ten, twenty years later? I thought you or maybe Renee said comp plan stuff's coming, or? Oh, just code.
Yeah, so, double times a year, we, we go through and it's tweaks here and there.
What Pauline traditionally has tried to do, a, a code tune-up, as we call it, or it's fixing issues that we, that is, that come across through development projects, her staff runs into, um, she's been, um, her, her work plan has been dedicated to doing more council-related, uh, projects like the tree code. It took a couple, a lot of time, so we, we missed a, a cycle or two for getting, um, the tune-up packages through, so she's been putting this, a lot of these ideas into a folder, and then she's now finally able to put those into a project and move it forward, so there are, there is quite a bit, um, so, uh, it will take a little bit of time to go through it, yeah, there's, there's some really good stuff.
Just a summary of the topics or the areas of code would be helpful. No reason to send us a pre-draft thing, so we get into the weeds too early, but.
I'm just excited.
Yeah, you need some, need some homework.
Okay, I think we're, uh.
Um, I was actually gonna ask Aaron, but he's, uh, split, just, uh, it's, it's a small thing, but on the maps that are provided in the write-ups, um, the staff reports, um, the staff reports, by the way, I thought have really been great. But I have trouble with the graphics when they're like multiple overlays, like the riparian and the floodplain. If, because it's, you know, four on, on one. If either they could revisit the coding, you know, the, the colors, the grid patterns, et cetera, to make it a little bit clearer, or break them out so that you've got the individual and then a composite, because I spent a lot of time trying to follow it. Tonight it wasn't that important, but on other things. Tonight it wasn't that important, but on other things it might be.
Okay, I can definitely bring that up with the planners. Um, so what you're talking about is, is too many layers on a map, so.
It's, it's a great issue.
It gets too busy. It's hard to see.
Can you put higher resolution photos in there, please, so that I can expand them and. Because sometimes they're really small.
I think there's, there's, there's high res in like the, uh, the actual.
Right, you have to go into.
You have to go into city view and I think what they do is when they put that into whatever document it goes into, it just gets.
It's static.
Well, it's like that thing where you gotta move an image and all of a sudden it's like.
Maybe it's, I'm just, you know, my separate exhibits to.
I, I, I'll pass it along and try to get a IT person who knows more about. Uh, but, but I will say that they, they are relying most of the time on materials out of the file, because they don't. Our planners aren't GIS people who can create their own maps, so they are relying a, a little bit on what's in there already. But I think they're probably given our digital tools kit that we have today, it probably could put it. Represent them a little bit clearer than they are.
Yeah, because they're probably originally twenty-four by thirty-six minimum, so when they get shrunk down to a. A lot. A little bit like that.
But I'll, I'll definitely pass it on.
Thank you. I think we're good to adjourn. Thank you. Colin, can I give a spot?
Oh, now I gotta go try to find hamster.